Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Tuesday, October sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, School Committee Meeting, seven P M. here at Tinsborough High School. I officially call this meeting to order, and we'll remind everyone that these meetings are audio and video recorded. So we will start with introductions to my line.
Robert Mullin.
Julie Gostucci.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Tannell.
Ryan McNamara.
Al Mitchell.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator.
Sophia Campbell, Senior Representative.
Thank you for the flagellations.
The flagellations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I will now seek a motion to approve the October second, two thousand and eighteen School Committee in Executive Session Minutes, Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
A motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero zero.
Correspondence?
Mr. Chair, tonight in your drive you'll find our annual Adopt a Family Letter, which will be going out this week. As you know, we have a lot of important fundraising opportunities in the community and a lot of fundraising opportunities that impact our kids and support our kids, perhaps not great in the Adopt a Family program. This will provide a holiday for over a hundred children in December, and the work that goes behind this is incredible. Spearheaded by some of the ones in Melissa Melissa and Sharon Fairbanks, this program has been a staple in our community for over twenty-five years, and it's one of the biggest fundraising endeavors we have to support our own community and support our kids. So this letter will be going home. We're soliciting donations of gift baskets or gift cards to local restaurants or stores, or if parents want to reach out and adopt a child or a family for the holidays, that certainly encourages as well. All the contact information is here in your drive. You're the first to see this letter, but I did want you to know that it's going out now. It's typical that these three ladies will work diligently over the next three months to ensure that these kids are on their holidays. So it's a great thing that we do, and I just wanted to let you know that's up and running again.
All right, very good. Thank you to the three ladies that put that together. If you've never been here at the school and seen what they collect and how much work goes into it, it's incredible. So thank you to them. Visitors, comments, and questions? See none. Share the success. Sophie.
Congratulations to the October Students of the Month, Tyler Neo, Melissa Harmon, Christian Beck, and Lindsay Riley. Last week was the high school's homecoming, which consisted of activities and challenges throughout the week between the grades, and ended with a pep rally for fall sports, who had their games on Saturday. Also last week was the middle school's Spirit Week, which ended with a dance on their basketball court Friday. Last Friday, T H S.'s Student Council had their first pancakes for Parkinson's fundraiser, where they served pancakes before school to raise money. And Sunday, the PALS program at the high school hosted a fall picnic.
Very nice. Thank you. Subcommittee update. Policy.
Um, tonight we reviewed eight policies. Um, they're all in your Dropbox. Um, six of the policies were reaffirming, and they're policy one point one, School Committee Structure, policy one point four, Complaint Concerns Committee Input, um, policy one point ten, High Standards Respect Dignity, policy one point one one, Study Committees, policy one point one three, Acceptance of Gifts with Commercial Message, and policy one point one seven, Memorials for Deceased Students or Staff. And then the other two policies, policy one point one four and policy one point one six, were putting on hold at this time, and I'm going to defer to Mr. Messina to explain what he's doing with these policies.
Thank you. So as Dr. Branko and myself were working through some of the reaffirmation of the policies in the book, there were a lot of fiscal policies that were peppered throughout the book and not generally in a comprehensive cohesive place within the school committee's policy book. Actually spoke to Dr. Flanagan in terms of, one of the goals that I wanted to do this year is to work with the policy subcommittee to present to the school committee a more overarching financial policy guideline, similar in the way that the town developed a financial policy at the town level, that the school committee would have their financial policies all in one cohesive spot in that policy book to adopt and be the overarching document in terms of financial management. Within all of your policies are also new federal guidelines that aren't in your policy book yet. So as part of this, we need to incorporate what the federal government calls Uniform Grant Compliance, in terms of any federal monies that you receive from the federal government. It's about six pages of language that just basically we have to work into the policy, and we can prove to our auditing team that we have this in place as part of your overarching financial policy. So I'm going to be coming, the subcommittee will be tired of seeing me probably for a number of few meetings that we hammer out a cohesive policy book for you to look through and make comments on at your level.
All right, okay. So we need a motion to approve.
Reaffirm.
To reaffirm all of the policies she mentioned.
Make double.
Second.
Cut that, Sharon.
Okay.
Uh, any further discussion on that? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero zero. Thank you. Personnel.
Uh, we were actually, I had a notice of intent to retire on January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, Pat Randowski. Pat Randowski has been a staple at the Tinsborough Middle School and Tinsborough Junior Singing High School for over thirty-six years. She's our Wilson parent professional. She does a phenomenal job with these kids, but I think she's looking to spend a little bit more time now south in Florida. So thank you, Pat, for her incredible service and commitment to the kids at Tinsborough. Phenomenal, phenomenal employee.
All right. Thank you. Unfinished business.
Uh, Mr. Chair, per request last week, uh, excuse me, per the committee's request last week, we look to identify all the subcommittees of the school committee that don't have an alternate already. Uh, I think the actual one to take tonight is, uh, these are the committees right here, as noted. If the committee wants to look at those committees, maybe send Sharon an email as to what committee they might be interested in being an alternate for. Uh, my only recommendation would be that Julie becomes the alternate for the M A S C, um, committee where she's going to be at the conference in November. So other than that, anyone else can kind of sign on to be the alternate for any of those committees, or we could take action tonight, however you'd like to proceed.
If anyone would like to just send Ms. Fairbanks your choices, uh, again, these are like the sick bank. I don't know when the last time that one actually.
They were many years, but.
Can you let, can you review who is the primary of all these, like the sick bank and this?
Was that in the drive? Yeah.
Policy. I can make that one up.
Julie. So we can, we can, we can email it out to you all. So why don't we do that? Why don't we email it out again, the list of all the subcommittees, and if you want to throw your name in and send it back, it'll be the easiest way to go.
The only thing we need to be cognizant of is committees of three can't have a fourth person there because of a quorum requirement.
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be an alternate in the event that somebody.
Is not.
Either resigned from the board or is unable to make it.
Or is on my book, yeah.
Right.
So you wouldn't necessarily have to go to.
Correct.
These meetings?
So that would be policy, technology, and superternity values are all committees of three right now.
So if one of us was to resign from our position here in the school committee until it was filled, we needed an alternate?
Correct.
Or somebody got sick or something like that. All right. So Ms. Fairbanks, you should be seeing those.
Thank you. And negotiations, like you go.
Yeah. Um, new business.
So, Mr. Chair, we have two presentations for you tonight, actually one presentation and one overview. Uh, I know Dr. Branko's put together a lot of accountability information. Um, as you know, the scores from our standardized tests just came out recently from Desi released those. Uh, Dr. Branko has been working tirelessly to really look at the data and really find the story in it. Uh, he's met, he's met with each of the principals, and I know he's got a presentation for us tonight, so I won't say anything further. There's something earlier to tell us.
So, um, what I have tonight will be a overview PowerPoint that I'll put together. Uh, you are the first audience to publicly see it. We'll do this tonight, that way we are all understanding, um, the accountability system, the current MCAS assessment format, and then what I really think is most important clearly is to talk about our kids and our scores. Um, so we'll do that work tonight, and then this presentation will be on the website, on the teaching and learning page, um, accessible to the public tomorrow. Principals have already had a look at the data as well as the presentation, and then we will start to move forward with reacting appropriately with programming and instructional decisions based on it. In your drive, you also have a couple of other resources. So you have this presentation, you also have a result summary, which I believe I provided in the exact supplement last year, in case, um, instead of looking at all the slides, you just want the quick cheat sheet. And then on this slide, what you also have from the state is a really, really quick and dirty, uh, one-page cheat sheet on the new accountability system. Um, the new, the new accountability system came out, um, this year, and they created this one-page overview. Um, schools have placed in one of two categories now. This is a change. They are either not requiring assistance or intervention, or they are requiring assistance or intervention. That's it. Those are the two major buckets that the state is modeling schools as. Um, they've established a variety of indicators that have been established to measure a school's progress towards meeting, um, the improvement targets in the first year, and we will take a look at some of that information. Uh, this is just a quick, uh, bold list of the things that we'll talk about. We'll talk about the additional accountability indicators that are being added to the new system. Um, the normative and criteria and reference components, so we'll have the accountability percentiles, which you are used to. That's when they have accountability percentiles from various schools across the state. Um, they also progress towards the targets that the state has put in place for us. There's a major focus on raising the performance of each school as far as performing students, not leaving behind those that are meeting and exceeding, but to really make sure that we're moving, um, those low performance students forward to the best of our ability. Big change is they discontinued the old accountability level. If you remember, they used to rank school districts and schools one to five. That is no longer happening. Um, they have replaced it with these accountability categories that are much easier to understand and have descriptors that are more helpful to the educators at every school level. Um, and the districts, um, will no longer be classified based on the lowest performing school in district. That's a great change too. So it used to be if you had a big district, five, six, seven, eight schools, and one of them wasn't meeting the mark sufficiently, the entire district was dinged in the accountability system. That has changed, and it's no longer the case as well. Um, these are those indicators that they're using when they grade us from an accountability standpoint. Uh, I have underlined the ones that have changed. So, um, the achievement has always been there. Uh, student growth has changed, so they're now using the mean student growth, which is a really nice change instead of median. So now they're using the average student growth percentile when they look at cohorts of kids to measure how one particular child or a group of children has grown over time. Uh, the other big change is that the English, English language proficiency is now counted for schools that have a cohort of twenty students or more. We are actually not in that category, while we do have more than twenty L. students, um, at different schools, because T E S. only tests MCAS grades three, four, and five. Uh, we're not in a position where we have twenty or more in grades three, four, or five. So for our purposes in this district, that category isn't counting, but you can imagine across the state, that's a big change too. Uh, and the last change that counts towards our accountability status for non-high schools for T E S. and T M. S. is this chronic absenteeism piece, um, and they're tracking, um, one percentage of students in each school missing ten percent or more of their days of membership. And this has caused schools to look at how to classify absenteeism. Um, as a parent, you know that you have, you have excused and unexcused criteria, and the state doesn't actually care about that criteria locally. Even though we have local autonomy to do that and to work with families, they care whether or not the child was there or wasn't. And if they weren't, that's a day of absence, and if you have a certain percentage of kids over ten percent, that will count against your accountability data. At the high school, at T H S., the only change is that the bottom, again, we don't have a maximum number of twenty or more for E L. L., but we have these additional indicators down at the bottom, in addition to chronic absenteeism, and this one will drive some of the work we do, as driven by our strategy for district improvement as well, is that they are now giving you credit for what percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders are completing advanced coursework. And by definition, they're specifically talking about advanced placement, international graphical AI, the enrollment courses, and then other selected courses that, um, school districts can hold up basically to the D S. to say, these are our overweighters program. So if you have, there's a higher percentage of students in more media programming, they actually give you more points in the accountability structure for that as well. Uh, this is an overview of the E L. L. proficiency indicators. I won't go through this since it isn't really impactful for our district. This is interesting. We will be talking about this with department heads, with content leaders, and with teachers, so that we talk about moving the needle and moving our student data forward to demonstrate growth over time for our kids by name. Um, we need to know what makes up the grade, so to speak. So this is a breakdown to say that for non-high schools, T E S. and T M. S., without the max of twenty L.s., that the percentage is broken out by sixty-seven point five in achievement, twenty-two point five for growth, and those additional indicators make up ten percent of your score. So when we talk about moving children forward, it's important that not only are we increasing our students' achievement levels, but if we have students who are already at an upper achievement level, are high flyers, we should be focusing on their growth personally. So if they can already jump this high, they should be trying to strive farther, and we shouldn't have an attitude, well, well, we're good enough because we're already there. And so as long as we stay focused on growth over time and making sure we're moving kids up the achievement bands to the best of their abilities, um, the accountability data theoretically can itself improve over time, of course, if you're just getting. The high school, this is the way, without the L.s. on the right-hand column, along with the actual additional indicators, um, you'll see you get ten percent bump for, um, not having issues with your chronic absenteeism and, uh, for what percentage of students are achieving that's worth for. So that just gives you a little mathematical insight into how they're weighting it. Overall, the accountability percentages on a one-to-ninety-nine calculation, this number, when we look at the accountability percentile for our three schools, you need to know that this is intended to hold us against the overall performance relative to other schools that serve similar grade levels. Um, and that's the best way they can do that. There are some schools across the state that might be eight to twelve, there might be some that are ten to twelve, so they can create some invulnerable cohorts in the district, uh, sorry, in the state, um, and when they use the accountability data, they are mixing, um, some school profiles, but if as close as possible. Uh, and they really want to use this data to identify the lowest performing schools and try to help them, and they've gone much more to a proactive accountability system, offering support and interventions as they're punishing school districts, uh, which is, again, a nice shift. The state came out with targets that we will talk about in a few minutes, um, that's really focused on closing the achievement gap by raising the achievement floor, is the language they're using. Um, the state recognizes that you could close a gap also as a result of declining performance by upper-level students, um, so we're clearly not focusing on that way to close the gap in Tinsborough, but they want out there that we should be cognizant of people pointing that out as a win. Um, and in addition to me, the targets for schools as a whole, um, the performance of our lowest performing students is measured, um, through subgroups and through identified cohorts for students who have been in the district for more than one year. So that's what's on this slide, and I won't read this all to you, but the reality here is they're trying to do with the transient population that can come in and out of certain school districts across the state, so that, um, they're really going to hold your data on students who have been here for that October one report in over a two-year period. So if, um, if people are flowing in and out of towns and school districts, um, those students will all, won't impact your data positively as they, as they come in and out of the district of the school district. Uh, this is a quick breakdown that talks about how the state has set the targets. Um, it's important to note that the current improvement targets have been set only for one year, and that they're serving as a baseline to measure improvement over time, and the targets have been based on past performance of schools that have demonstrated improvement, um, as well as an analysis of trends and what the state thinks is reasonable expectations for improvement. That sounds a little nebulous to me, that they've sort of just identified where we think growth should be, but you have to remember that this is only our second year of the brand of MCAS testing. So because we only have really one year of data and then a second year now to compare, we don't have enough data over time to really have strong targets yet. Um, so these targets will be, uh, I would predict these targets will change and be literally moving targets for a couple of years until they, um, can identify where we all need to be. So the major takeaways that I've heard through the many webinars and places I've gone to talk to people about this from the state is to take a breath, the first year of accountability is intended just to look to see if any changes or refinements will be made after a year or two. So they want us to settle and understand that it's year one, not over or underreact to that. The weight of the state level is that they're not going to name any new underperforming districts or schools. Um, four of them have been released from that underperforming status. If you like the overarching data, sixty-eight percent of Massachusetts schools were shown to be improving or better, and the D S. has designated fifty-two schools across the state as schools in recognition based on this data. The last bullet is important for those of us who like to compare data points. Do not compare the two thousand and eighteen data to historic accountability results. You cannot do it. It is absolutely different. It has been a different mathematical system. Obviously, you cannot do that, and they have not and will not be developing crosswalks between, um, the old data and the new data. So we're basically turning the page, literally and starting last year, the year of, sorry, two thousand and seventeen. So we have two thousand and seventeen data, two thousand and eighteen data, and that's as far back as we can go, when if you want to compare our students to our students, our students to the state, or us to anybody else. Um, this is the big picture stuff, how many schools, you know, are classified in each across the state. If you'd like to dive into this on your own, you can do that. I'll put that in for you. This is our data. Uh, and what I did is I took it out of the report that you have in your, in your drive, and I just broke it out by slide, so you'll see that the overall classifications are in there, the progress towards the targets are in there, um, and our overall accountability percentile is in there. All three schools and the district are classified as not requiring assistance or intervention. That is the positive side of the two data points we talked about earlier. Tinsborough High School's accountability percentile of eighty-one is extremely strong, and sixty-one percent progress toward improvement targets demonstrates steady improvement overall. That's a very, very positive result for the high school. While you'll see in a few minutes that in many cases our students at T E S. and T M. S. have grown individually and collectively, when our data is compared to other schools similar, certain similar grades, we see that we have improvement to make. And so we drill down at the student level, and we will see lots of wins along the way. Um, unfortunately, when we compare our data to other schools of similar profiles, we just have it's grown at the same pace as other school districts, but we have lots of evidence that we are, and when we look at kids by name, we know what we need to do to help them get where they're going. Um, a review of the detailed data for each indicator also points out a few things. So when we look at Tinsborough High School, they made improvements towards or that were exceeded the improvement targets in almost every single indicator in all three subject areas. Uh, the student growth percentile in E L. and math are below fifty percent, um, at forty-six point eight, at forty-nine point three. So that is something, when you look at the high school's data, that's something we will talk about, and Chris Love and I already started that conversation, really trying to change the mindset of Tinsborough High School to talk to them before. We are a high-performing high school. We've got talented kids academically. It's not just good enough to say, hey, we've hit that bar, hit that state set mark. We need to really look at growing and pushing students individually, collectively. Um, and again, it's a benchmark, it, it's a, sorry, it's a final exam, so to speak, at the tenth grade level, right? So a lot of us just feel like, well, that's it. It's done, we turn that page, but we have to understand that they move on and take, in many cases, high-end rigorous and elective coursework for eleven to twelfth grade. How they're doing this can really predict and help us understand their needs as students when they push forward to eleven to twelfth grade program. So we don't want our eleven to twelfth grade teachers to think, well, this is meaningless to us. Um, we want to use this data wisely to inform what we do with this. This is just a quick reminder that we are still transitioning from what we're used to with older students, the old legacy MCAS with advanced proficient needs improvement warning to the new next generation language of exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting, and not meeting. They are not, I wish this slide wasn't built this way. They are not equal to each other. I almost wish the state came up with three or five, but they didn't, so I apologize for that, but they're not the same. Advanced is not identical to the C. You can't create a crosswalk, it's just not for taking those four data points. So, for example, our students in last year in tenth grade took the legacy MCAS, just to remind us all, tenth graders took the E L. A. and the math legacy MCAS, where our three through eighth graders took the new next generation. That is also true for science. Um, as we move forward, all students three to ten, E L. A. and math will take the next gen, and we'll be transitioning the science students as well towards the next gen. So eventually this left side drops off, and we can all just agree on the current language, but those of us learning it and working with it that are still blending, I'll need to move it. Uh, if you don't have a student taking these exams, this is new to you, so this is what a parent report looks like. I just wanted you to be able to see this, so this, that's why this will be up on the site. So this is the, uh, it shows where the child is, where their score is, where they fall the continuum, and it gives, um, an overview of the score at the bottom. And here's page two, um, just breaks through the child to report down by, by a content area and by individual question. So the next few slides, I'll just go by school, so you'll see this is the result summary, also broken out off of your report, um, if you wanted to take a quick look at that. I will step us through some of the highlights of this. Uh, this table presents T E S.'s results by achievement level and by mean student growth. Uh, as we review the E L. A. results for grades three to five, um, at the elementary school, we are really pleased to see that more than sixty-four percent of our students per grade level are meeting or exceeding expectations. However, we do need to continue to identify those students who are in the bottom third and provide them with purposeful interventions that are designed to help them close the gap. Um, it is also encouraging to note that we are exceeding the statewide results in E L. A. at all three grade levels. So you almost work, um, in the E L. A. at the elementary school data, and I'll lead her in that, uh, we just ran a workshop on her for many years, and we have seen the results of that work, um, in not just state testing, but it's been in our students' school grade, school grade performance as well. While we are pleased to see that sixty percent of third graders are meeting or exceeding expectations in math, that was not the case in grade four and five. So as we review the math results three to five, it is clear that we still have some work to do in helping students gain the knowledge and skills that are necessary to meet these expectations, and a comparison of our elementary math data to the state run results also supports this back. So, um, at the end of the presentation, I'll just give you a quick highlight into the work we're doing in which we've schooled to really talk about math as we move ahead in the distance. Reviewing the fifth grade science, um, results, we'll see that forty-six percent of our fifth graders are proficient or advanced. While that is below fifty percent, I would like to remind all of us, um, that the state transitioned to new frameworks back in two thousand and sixteen, and as a result, the students in two thousand and eighteen were actually assessed on a blend of the old framework and the new one, which my personal opinion is that's not a great practice, um, but that's the way they did it. We made a decision in the district when we adopted the new science curriculum to move forward and work on the current frameworks, so we are aware, um, that there are going to be gaps in the state results, but we do believe that as we move into the two thousand and nineteen testing season, um, our students will be really well-prepared to take that test, because it will be fully implemented with the, with the standards. This is cohort data, and I know some of you like to compare apples to apples more than apples to oranges. That's what this does. The state is going to give us this data, so I broke this data out for us. Um, this is very, very important to teachers, very important to the, to the school leadership teams. So what I've done is in these slides, you're going to see, um, a comparison of the students against themselves. So this is a review, um, of current fifth graders from last year when they were fourth graders and from two thousand and seventeen when they were third graders. And we're happy to see that in the E L. A. we increased our percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding from fifty-four to sixty-five percent, while decreasing our percentage of students who are partially are not meeting from forty-seven to thirty-five. So that's a big win in the E L. A. columns. In math, we did see a downward trend in that the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations fell a bit from fifty-five to forty-three, and the percentage who are partially not meeting rose from forty-four to fifty-eight, and that is consistent with the other math data that we have seen at the fourth and fifth grade level. This slide shows you this year's sixth graders, who were our fifth graders when they tested and the fourth grade the year before. Again, happy to see that in E L. A. we increased our percentage of students meeting and exceeding from fifty-seven to sixty-four, well above sixty, very high over state average, while decreasing our percentage of students who are partially are not meeting. And again, in math, you see a little bit of a downward trend in the percentage of students moving from about fifty-eight to forty-nine percent at the upper level. So we will, um, we will be discussing math quite a bit at the elementary level from a programming standpoint and a structural standpoint, um, and we've made it really clear that it's not about being above the state, it's about being better than we are, than we are. So that every year, we want to get progressive and better and stronger. At the middle school, we see similar results. Whereas in the elementary school, the ELA results are higher. Here, we're right around fifty percent meeting and exceeding. The exception is in seventh grade, and this is an interesting exception. If you've had a seventh grader recently, we are, we are below the statewide average in the other two, but in seventh grade, we're well above. And our student growth percentage is cracking as well in seventh grade. We're pleased to see more than fifty percent of our students exceeding or meeting expectations in math. So that's a shift, particularly in seventh and eighth grade math, our scores go up and get better. So the data points tell us that fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math is really where we're going to start to focus our work. On whether that's a programmatic shift or instructional shift, I will work with principals and teachers to get, to better understand that information. This slide again takes us through the sixth grade cohort at TMS. Similarly, we're going to see a percentage of students meeting and exceeding, moving, hovering around fifty percent by moving down to the high forties again. And we're going to see in math, our percentages remain pretty flat above fifty percent. So that's a positive result in the math that we see remain above fifty. And our wind block and our intervention programming is hopefully going to help those students who are all about fifty percent marking. And finally, this slide shows our current eighth graders who took the test to seventh graders. In ELA, our percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding or partially remains statistically flat with only changes of one percent. It's important to note historically, statewide, the seventh grade ELA assessment is very difficult. That's also clear that they get hit with the five paragraph essay and one composition writing. So as a result of that, we are proud of the fact that our seventh graders maintained their results and did not drop compared to themselves, which is a nice win, especially when all we hear about the state levels are difficult. So it's really important. When we skip to the high school results, again, it's a different picture. They only test the one subject area. It's not necessarily cumulative over time. If you've had a high school student, they take down course that year. So they're paired in a different way for this test. But again, very pleased to say that ninety-eight percent of our tenth graders are proficient or advanced. And that's important to note that the two percent of those students did actually take the traditional MCAS. The tenth grade math is the same astounding result. Ninety-one percent of our students proficient and advanced. And in science, we take it in ninth grade and ninety-two percent of our students. So we do have interventions put in place, and that with Principal Ogden, they review the plans for those particular students to support the very small percentage of students at THS who are identified as not in the group letter failing. And he has assured me that that work is already started, and those kids will be taken care of. And this is the last slide, just to give you a quick highlight of our next step. So I met with principals to go through the data. They are now meeting with the content leaders to review their particular content area results. And then those content leaders and school administrators, starting next week, will be meeting all teachers in those subject areas in an MCAS data analysis protocol that we actually started and piloted last year. We weren't using one part of that, so we piloted one last year. And, and I believe that led to some of the decision making this year, and it will continue to lead to our decisions for next year. So if you see, this is sort of the laundry list of the end of things that we are proud of, that we know are pushing our district forward. And there are some things on here that have not come to fruition yet. So we'll continue to focus on co-teaching across the district. We will be refining our wind block and intervention times at the elementary school and the middle school. Remember that at TMS and THS, we are supporting the first year of implementation in our new math program. So our math programs were successful in middle school, very successful in high school. So we believe we're going to see wins coming out of new programming. The big conversation at the elementary school, and Principal Kevin and I, Kevin and I have taught, talked a lot about this over the past two weeks, is going to be about addressing instructional practices mathematically and our instructional materials at the elementary school. And we believe, based on the evidence of success we have coming out of ELA, that if our readers and writers workshop can be powerful and impactful for the student growth in ELA, we can do the same thing in math. So we're going to be looking at guided math models and workshop models for math, which will be more authentic, more hands-on, and provide students with differentiated ways to learn math and do math, which is not necessarily the case in all classrooms right now. So that is, that's where we stand. You have a lot of information in your folder. I know that was fast. So take your time with it. If you so choose, call me, email me, visit me.
Well, thank you for, for putting this together for us. It is a lot of information. I'm sure it took a lot of time to put that together. So thank you for that. I will open it up. Mr. Mitchell's on there.
This presentation is going to be on
The website.
On the website. I just recommend to people that are watching to, if they can, to pull that up and try and watch it on their laptop, because you probably couldn't, can't see it on the, on the screen. But I think it's a, you know, the things are changing as far as the testing things. It's going to take a little time for everybody to comprehend what the numbers mean. And there are going to be a lot of questions, like the percentiles. Can you go over the, how those were calculated again? I mean, I think.
You're talking about the total accountability percentile? Yeah. So the accountability percentile is set on high schools, on these four indicators. So they're looking at achievement in ELA math and science scores. They're looking at our student growth percentiles, and they are looking at the additional indicators of chronic absenteeism. And so then they are comparing our data to like schools across the state. And basically, for lack of a better term, percentage ranking us ninety-nine to one, where you fall in comparison to the schools that are like your school as far as the population, students, and the grade levels.
So they're ranking us, there's a school that got to ninety-nine and?
Yep. Not one, but there could be schools in the ninety-nine, yeah, right. There could be schools in the ninety-second percentile, fifty percentile, thirty percentile. And so when you look at the high school, what we learned from that data, if I can find that slide with best word, when we look at that data at the high school level, which is the culminating assessment, this is the one that counts. This is the one that we measure success with as our X exam at the state level. Our high school data is very strong, and we are in the eighty-first percentile. And our progress toward improvement is at sixty-one percent, where the state is looking for a minimum of fifty percent. What we did learn is obviously, when you look at our accountability level at TMS, this is where there's a disconnect between our accountability percentage and our growth results. So we have evidence that students are growing. But the way I explain it to the principals and to some of the teachers is think about trying to climb a mountain. And if there's a flag at the top of the mountain, we're trying to climb up it. The hundred percent is getting to climb, to grab that flag. So our students currently at the middle school are not falling down the mountain, nor are they standing still in the mountain. They're climbing up the mountain in both subject areas. They're just not getting up the mountain at the same speed as other middle schools. So we have to figure out why, and we have to figure out why there is our appropriate speed difference. And so that would, if we do that well, then our accountability percentile will raise. TES is right around fifty-five percent. And I would argue that that's strictly because we are high, high, high in ELA and below in math. And if we fix those instructional strategies, I would, I would suspect that TES will shoot them up by ten to twenty points over two or three years.
The mountain analogy is the best one I got for you.
There's a lot, seems like there's a lot of work to do in the, in the lower grades.
Four to six in math. And then I'll say what we, what we believe, and if it changes, I'll come back. But right now, we believe it's fourth, fourth to sixth in math. And we believe in general at the middle school, it's to tighten up our writing practices and make sure that students are writing at a much higher level, because the writing permeates all of the assessments. The writing across curricular areas, whether it's a social studies assessment, a science assessment, or math assessment, our kids are writing about those subject areas now. So we, we have had TLA in our district for one year. They came in and they're doing a writers workshop model, job embedded PD. We had three or four sessions with them last year. They're coming back this year for another three or four sessions, and really trying to change our instructional practice at the middle school in ELA. I believe that based on the results of the elementary school, that if the middle school buys in and executes a similar model that's happening at the elementary school, there's no reason we shouldn't see that change. Secondly, Principal Pollard and leadership team have changed the teaming model. So they've reconfigured those teams. They put different people in different positions for specific reasons. And we believe that we'll see results as a result of that reconfiguration as well. So I, I think what you need to hear, what we're actually here is we're not sitting still. We are taking the data, which are kids by name. You know, it's numbers on a spreadsheet in a PowerPoint here, but it's kids by name. And give them one shot to take that seventh grade and one shot for the eighth grade. We need to make sure we're doing our best ability to make that happen.
Anyone else?
Being a parent of one of those current fifth grade cohorts right now, is there any consideration as far as to how, and this has got to do with math, how certain topics are introduced to the students? It's just that I saw a very big difference between fourth to fifth grade in, and of course, it's a year passed now, but so I can't give you any specifics. But there was a very big difference in how those were being introduced to the children, how homework was being presented, and us and expectations on those. So I'm just wondering, I guess my question is, was there a difference in curriculum between third and fourth grade? Was there a change there, or is it just, or is it something else?
So not in materials. There are two drivers. When you talk about moving student progress forward, one is the curriculum materials, and the second is instructional practice. So we talk all the time about that as leaders and as teachers, that those are the two things we can control. So the instructional materials are the same. They're using them in this program across the board in that school. The instructional methodology, the pedagogy could vary. And what we are currently doing is we're going to spend this year, and I just can't tell you how yet, because we're right at the beginning of it. We're talking about consultants. We're talking about studying other schools, going out to look at some of those schools that were on the list as the fifty-two, to identify what instructional strategies are being implemented. And we're going to look internally as well, because we have some teachers who are doing fantastic things in the classroom. Sometimes we don't build capacity within as well as we should. That's too many organizations. So we'll look outside at IT organizations. We'll look internally at our practices. And the shift would be to calibrate so that we have all teachers using best instructional practices in a way that's, that's consistent across the grade level. That's, that's a big answer, but that's the goal. And they've done it successfully in English language. We've already done it once. We just have to do, get that work in another subject area.
And it's the same kids, so we know what their kids are.
Yeah, that's why I put those paragraphs up there, it's the same kids. Thank you.
Any other questions? Again, we tease you about.
Thank you, Coach. I guess one other question. Are you going to have any informational sessions for parents on this, once these?
Not on the accountability system. This is all of the parents' second year. So when we did the presentations, we sent out overview materials to parents on the new MCAS format. So right now, what the principals are talking about is just if they threw their, to their scores or through their parent PTO meetings and other extensions of the school. I do think it's different in every school. So I believe that the principals will have to decide if they feel like their parent base understands the second year of the MCAS enough. What they do do is we reach out to particular families based on the data. When we start talking about intervention, programming, lack of growth and achievement. So that's done clearly at the family level. But overall, this is our second year with the new test. I feel like we did a pretty good job last year of rolling out that information.
Do the parents have these, their results for their kids right now?
They do. They asked me that last week.
All right, thank you. So obviously, a ton of work into that. And it's all, it's all good work, because, you know, it's not a moving target for where we need to focus our resources. And we know exactly where we need to go, and we're going to go there and do what we can to, to right the ship and make some corrections, make some adjustments. So thank you for that, Dr. Branco. Mr. Chair, number nine B, that's the, I give it to you more as information than anything else. As you go back to the agenda, this is the finding, some reason, these are, these are the findings from my entry plan. As you know, two years ago, we established entry plan, and we reached out to various stakeholders in the community to find out what this community wanted to see in their school system. And the reason I give you this document now is as we start to move forward and think about budget season, as we start to think about programming and electors and courses and staffing patterns, I wanted to show you what the community priorities were. So you can see thirty-one percent of the community, they want us to increase our academic programming, increase rigor. So what we did, we had an admin meeting, we brought all the principals together, and we looked at specifically what the community wanted and what we've done over the past eighteen months to address those responses. So this is for informational purposes only for the school committee to look at and to ask questions about it and think about deeply. When it comes time for us to make budget decisions, we did a great job of it as a committee last year of prioritizing literacy in the elementary school, making that staffing higher priority. This is what the report entry findings said. This is what the community wanted. These are the steps we've taken. And I just want to give this to you now. It's just more backup information. I know that, you know, if you go on Facebook, or if you're at the soccer field, or if you're at a dance, you're going to hear everyone has a different priority as to where the school system should go. When we reached out, this is what the community said. And this has been our focus. And I think we've done a lot of work to, to achieve a lot of, make progress in the district and maybe programming and certainly address some of these needs. So I'm just giving this to you as a, as a point of reference as we go forward. And I'm happy to speak more deeply or more thoroughly on it at a future meeting. But again, I just wanted you to have this in your drive, so in case anyone was saying, you know, we're not the priorities of the district. Here they are. So it's point of information all night. I was long with the way to get the point of information.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Mr. Messina, finance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, the school committee had twelve bill warrants presented to them. I have them all back approved. In the drive are your list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts for those, for signing of payroll. Two warrants since we last recorded them, the payroll of October first, and the payroll of yesterday, the fifteenth. Again, in your drive, warrant numbers and amounts are in the FER review. We also have September's financial package. In the drive is the school committee's budget as of the end of September, the revolving account balances at the end of September, as well as the list of student accounts for the end of the month. I will defer to the chair for the membership for October one.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. September two thousand eighteen financial package, October enrollments, Tenth Grade Elementary School, eight hundred and three, Tenth Grade Middle School, three hundred and sixty-five, the high school, four hundred and eighty-two, Ida District twenty, for a grand total of one thousand six hundred and seventy students. Anything else, Mr.?
Just very quickly, we do not have a scheduled meeting until November twentieth due to the election at the beginning of November. I will be reaching out to the single signers the week of November fifth in terms of signing a packet of bills, so we keep our vendors happy. Also, in terms of the multi-function school activity bus that we were awarded at town meeting, we are tracking the amounts that we are saving for these trips. First five trips are in the book. We've saved approximately nineteen hundred dollars, five trips alone. It's scheduled this week, one actually today, and two tomorrow, and one Friday. Will probably be close to five thousand dollars by the end of this week that we've saved, which is-
And it didn't go into effect until two weeks ago.
Right.
We didn't get it delivered on-
Right. And that's, that's ten percent of the cost.
I just want to clarify, it's a multi-function vehicle. It's not a bus.
Multi-function school activity bus is its official term. We call it Bruce in the office now. We didn't want to say van, we didn't want to say bus. But understanding that each time we use our contractor for an athletic event or, or some other co-curricular programming, four dollars a mile, fifty-five dollars per hour wait time for any of those vehicles. So we're going to see the wrestling meets will probably be a huge savings, because the wait times at wrestling meets are tremendous, ten, eleven, twelve-hour wait times. I think Ms. Palumbo is ready for bus number two. We have that, we have that number one, but certainly we see it paying for itself, not just in the trips that we would have scheduled, but also in some of the co-curricular items that we may not necessarily have gone to. Leadership academies for the middle school, athletic ambassadors going down to Maya at the end of this week. So we'll keep tracking that, and I'll keep updating you on them.
We haven't had a time when somebody couldn't use it because somebody else was using it yet, have we?
Tomorrow will be the first double header where the high school is taking it to one of the Deca Leadership Academies during the school day, and they will pass the keys off to the golf team. during the school day, and they will pass the keys off to the golf team. We'll take it after school to a golf match.
Okay, but no one's been denied the bus
There has been no denial.
No.
And we've actually had
Common footprints that were saved too. Small vehicle, the bus exhaust. Just making that one.
And we have
Thanks, Mike.
We've had the ability to allow our students to do things they otherwise wouldn't have.
Correct. We did not have that, would the middle school have necessarily been able to afford six, seven hundred dollars to take four students to a leadership academy in Manchester? Those were the type of things that we would have to say no in the past due to budgetary constraints. So some of those things where our students were not afforded an opportunity because the group was so small to go to a venue such as that. And that happened last year, and I think the superintendent recalls how, you know, it's not a nice thing to hear that, you know, schools are making decisions that, you know, it would have been nice to send our kids to this, or, you know. We look forward to seeing those increase.
So is it, not only is it paying for itself, it's providing more opportunities for our kids, which is a win-win all the way around. So thank you to everybody involved in helping us get that.
And that's it for me today.
School committee discussion.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Well, what a great homecoming game that was.
Yes, it was.
A fantastic ceremony before the game for the new field, the rededication ceremony, very excited. I think that a lot of work was put into that by the committee, by superintendent and the team. So fantastic job. What a great night.
I'm all set, thank you.
I just want to give another shout out to Dr. Branco in terms of the information he presented tonight. You know, we kid a lot in the office. I mean, you know, Dr. Branco's plans, a lot of them, you know, have dollars attached to them, and we always joke about him coming to see me for a dollar, a dollar here or a dollar there for some of this programming. But he put a lot of work into this data, and it's a good model for him to continue to present even at the lower levels now that you've seen it. So thank Mark for that.
I also want to encourage anybody that has any questions or they more than welcome to call Dr. Branco, the superintendent, to, you know, they'll at least get you in the right direction anyways. So I encourage you to go forward with that. Speaking of the bus in the field, we've got one other project that we really haven't finalized yet, and that's the SOLA project. Is there any updates on?
So my last update from Alex Keely from Select is that everything's up, ready to go. We had to wait for National Grid to sort of give us that window to make the transfer. He anticipates us going live right around Thanksgiving in terms of having live data at that point. Hopefully, we can get them at a December meeting just to give the committee some of the, some of the data that's available and out there for, for us and for all of us stakeholders to look at as to what we're saving out there. But right now, it's, it's waiting on National Grid, which
This Saturday is the electrical shut-off to tie it in to National Grid. So National Grid's coming this Saturday. They've shut down the power to this campus to tie everything in and then work out all the kinks from that point there. So we're very close.
So it's been all inspected by the town and
Once, not until tied.
Not until tied.
Not until tied, then all the final inspections.
Final inspections. Okay, great.
It would be a big switch that they got one.
Hopefully, the rest of the town doesn't go elsewhere they put the switch, yeah.
They usually do it
Hopefully, it's not raining or snowing.
By shutting down the power, that can interrupt any weekend activities?
No, which is why I can move for this weekend.
Okay, good.
No, no, I'm coming in case.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
I won't forget you this week.
Thanks, just to be that nice boy. Thank you to members of the FINCOM and more likely CPC that came out. Certainly, it was a community effort to reopen Pierce Field. Joey, hit the nail on the head, talk about Mark. I mean, this is, this is the work we do. This is the important stuff that Mark just presented. And we know, we recognize, we fully recognize that we have a lot of work to do. And we are one percent up to the task, and we know that it will be targeted and will be comprehensive, and we will follow through to make sure that we do whatever we can to position our kids as best we can. Our kids do well, and now that we've identified where we need to adjust, we're going to make those adjustments. So excited to have this data that we can lean on so we can make some plans moving forward.
Very good. I'd like to echo homecoming night. The grounds really look good. Not only the football field, but the grounds here at Ammon Road Road Campus really look nice, the walkway, everything. So the snack bar, great. There's a lot of chat about the bathrooms for those people who hadn't been here before.